This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you all for those that have joined, and I know there's some people that couldn't join, and we're videoing this just in case. There is a chat that is as a part of this, so I put on there that if there's any additional, we have a bunch of questions that parents have asked that we're going to answer tonight. If there's any other questions, any additional questions that come out of tonight, we'll look at the chat afterwards, and we'll certainly send out some information as a follow-up with an A question. So for those of you who I've not met, my name is Joe Chella, and I am the principal here at Bennett, and I am very excited for this evening to get some information out. As you know, this is a very busy time, and there's a lot coming at you as parents, so we understand that, so this is a nice way to answer some of your questions that many of you have had on an individual basis, and certainly we thought they were questions that would help everyone as well. So quickly, I'd just like to have our presentation team, our administrators team, and also our head secretary, Ms. Hagenauer introduce herself, she'll be our moderator. So if everyone could just take a minute and introduce yourselves, and then we'll get started.
Hi, I'm Joan Charnas, I'm a principal, grade six.
Hey, everybody, this is Megan Thompson, another assistant principal, and I work with fifth grade.
Did everybody hear me?
Go ahead, Kathy, go again, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, hello, everyone, this is Mrs. Amadison, one of the assistant principals at Bennett. Welcome, and thanks for joining us.
Hi, everyone, I'm Lauren Hagenauer, I am the lead secretary for Bennett Academy, and I'll be your moderator tonight.
And Joan, did you want to introduce yourself?
This is Joan Charnas. Okay, hi, everyone, this is Joan Charnas, grade six, assistant principal.
All right, so just reminded to all those presenting to just mute yourselves while someone else is answering. So again, you know, it's funny, because our three of us are in the same office, so we all have doors closed between us and trying not to hear the echoes, so hopefully you won't hear echoes as well. So again, we're thrilled to have you with us tonight. We have several questions that have come in over the past months, really, and that we thought would be very beneficial. Again, if there's anything added to the chat, we will get that information out to you in the near future. But just, I just want to mention that some of the direct questions regarding health and safety, there is going to be a meeting, and it hasn't been shared with families yet, but it will be soon. So next Tuesday, September 1st, Central Office is going to have a town hall, and that town hall meeting, that virtual town hall, is going to be on health and safety specifically. So there's a COVID manual that's being sent out to families. If it's not been sent out today, it'll be sent out within the next day or two, specifically regarding health and safety, and there'll be a lot of questions about that. So this is for the entire district. So, you know, some of the questions that we've had, we've kind of, you know, shared with Central Office, and they're going to have that on, again, next Tuesday, September 1st at 7:00 p.m. There'll be a few questions we included tonight regarding health and safety, but the majority of them will be answered and addressed on, again, next Tuesday, the 1st at 7:00 p.m. And again, you don't have the link yet for that, but it will be sent out. So we're going to begin, we're going to turn it over to our moderator. Again, thank you all for being here. Just know that we are very, very excited, as you all are, I'm sure, to get this year started and to get students back in the building, you know, and just to get started. Again, whether it's remote or hybrid, and we certainly have a good amount of students that are remote as well, and we're just excited to get started and connect again with students, build relationships. And as I mentioned in one of my earlier emails, you know, to build upon the relationships that we have with our grade six families, and to build relationships with our incoming families. I also mentioned that Mr. Gary has been sharing a lot of information, and it makes sense, there's a lot coming at you to have it come from one person. He's been doing that district-wide, but obviously you're hearing more now from the building administrator, so we're looking forward to communicating more with you, and, you know, as we have in the past week or two, and then obviously tonight. So I'll turn it over to our moderator and Ms. Hagenauer.
Thank you. Mr. Chella, why are we opening in a hybrid model instead of returning all students to school full-time?
That's a great question, and that's kind of the question of the hour. So I'm going to revert back to what Mr. Gary had shared, and really, we looked at many different options, and in order for us to completely follow the CDC guidelines, so, you know, which around social distancing, the hybrid model was the safest model to go with, and also, you know, and as a school, we're looking through a lens of safety, as a district, we're looking through a lens of safety, hence the email that we sent out last night about going with more of an elementary model to limit points of contact. The last thing we want to do is have a spike in cases where we have to end up going all remote again. So we believe that this, the hybrid model is the most prudent approach at this time.
Thanks. Mr. Chella, why are we using a Monday, Thursday, and Tuesday, Friday rotation?
Sure, so again, another popular question. So we, we looked at, as a district, we looked at multiple models and multiple ways to do this, and at the end of the day, we thought what was best for students were for them to be in-person at the beginning of the week, and then again at the end of the week. And, you know, we're going to be sending out information next week with students, you know, when they're coming in, but in addition to in-person at the beginning and end of the week, they're also getting remote contact as well on the off days that they're not in. So that's going to be shared with you next week, but we felt that as a district, it was best to have contact at the beginning, in-person at the end of the week. So that's the model we went with.
Thank you. Mrs. Amadison, how will special education students be accommodated based on IEP, and how will you support special education students and other students with additional needs?
Can you hear me? Ms. Hagenauer, can you hear me?
We can hear you, you're good, Kathy.
Okay, so this year, we plan for students to work within a set cohort, and we are doing everything we can to make sure that special education students as well are doing the same. Classroom teachers will provide differentiated instructions with the support of specialists and interventionists, they will all come into the classroom as much as possible. It also may be necessary for students to experience at least one transition during the day in order to attend a specific class or experience. They will be coming to school four days, so that gives time for all of this to happen.
Thank you. Mrs. Charnas, are students allowed to have backpacks?
Yes, we are not using backpacks, not using lockers at Bennett this year. Hybrid students will need to transport their Chromebooks to and from school, and there's also space in classrooms for students to store their belongings. So yes, they are allowed to have that.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson, what is the process for exchanging broken Chromebooks and chargers?
Hey, everybody, sorry. Okay, so Chromebooks, there's a couple of different processes. So if you're a hybrid student joining us in the building for a couple of days a week, and there's something wrong with your Chromebook, you're going to bring it with you to school as you normally would, and turn it over to your teacher, and your teacher's going to fill out a Google form that's going to be sent to the IT department, and they'll grab your Chromebook and fix it, or replace it while they fix it. If you are a remote student, and something happens with your Chromebook, we're going to have to have you or your parent contact us at Bennett at the school. If you can't sort of even log on to, you know, meet your teacher remotely, have a parent contact us at the school so we can arrange for a drop-off or a pickup of the Chromebook and exchange it for another one that will work while we repair yours.
That's great, thank you. Mrs. Thompson, what, oh, whoops, sorry. Mrs. Thompson, what is the process to obtain a Chromebook if one was not supplied in the spring?
It's a great question. So we've been giving tours, you know, this week's incoming families, and that is a question that has come up a lot. So both remote and hybrid teachers are going to determine who needs a district-issued Chromebook right at the onset of the year. So we're going to be contacting families via phone, teachers, once they determine who's in their cohort, we'll be contacting families and just kind of gauging what's needed for this year. So if you have a Chromebook currently and it's not working well, we will figure that out, and like I said, exchange it for you, get it fixed. If you don't have a Chromebook and you need a Chromebook, we'll determine that as well. And so right at the onset, you're not going to, you know, the first couple of days of school, we're going to try to work to get sure, make sure that everybody gets the device that they need.
That's great, thank you. Mrs. Charnas, is there a list of school supplies students will need to purchase?
Supplies have been ordered. Cohort teachers will share with students and families if anything else is needed. One of the supplies that we're providing is a box for the kids, a pencil box, and of course, it'll be filled with what they need.
Thanks so much. Mr. Chella, when will I find out my child's schedule?
Sure, so schedules are going to be mailed out at the beginning of next week, and we're doing bulk mailing, so it takes a couple of days to get to you, but, and in that letter, it will have your team, your students' team, their cohort teacher, and we'll also have a graph showing you what days they're in, what days they're remote, remote meaning when you're, on the off days of when you're in, there's a remote in the afternoon, and then it'll also talk about Wednesday is all remote. So that will be sent out next week. We'll also have some information about the beginning of the school year as well in that letter, so be looking forward to that, a lot of good information in that letter.
Great, can't wait to get that. Mr. Chella, will we be receiving information to prepare for the first day of school?
Absolutely. So in that letter, it will talk about the first day of school, where kids will go. Also, I sent out last night, or the night before, I think it was last night, an email regarding, you know, who's in. First week's a little bit different than, you know, starting the week of the 14th is our typical schedule that we send home in our next week, but the 14th's a little bit different. I'll send out more information as we get closer, reminding you, but kids will only be in one day in that first week. But, and the big question is, you know, where do they go when I drop them off? You know, parents obviously can't come in the building, so it's still be staff outside that will, you know, let students know to come into the courtyard. We'll have home-based teachers. So we will have home-based teachers, our cohort teachers socially distanced in the courtyard, so we'll have, it will all be identified in that letter, nice, easy to follow, so we can, you know, keep everyone's stress level down, and everyone will know exactly what to do when they show up. Ms. Charnas, can you just quickly, can you turn your mic up a little bit? I think we're having a little trouble hearing you on your computer.
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you. And Lauren, you probably can just keep yourself unmuted, I don't think it will, if it provides an echo, we'll stop, that way you don't have to go back and forth.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Thompson, will the curriculum and overall learning be different this year?
I feel like this is a big question, so the short answer is yes, yes, it will. So learning priorities, curriculum teams worked over the summer to sort of identify, you know, our learning priorities in each content area, in each grade level, and we're taking into account lost instructional time from the spring. So although, you know, our families or our Kent Bennett students and students across the district have had some experience with remote learning from the spring, it is going to look different this year, because we are incorporating some formal, direct instruction, which may or may not have been present, you know, in the spring, as we were kind of getting through the end of last year. We're also looking, as Mr. Chella spoke about before, through the lens of safety, and really planning for the potential need for all of us to transition to a fully remote, like, learning model in the event of increased COVID-19 cases. So one of, you know, if you are a hybrid student coming into the building, one of the things that will be very different is that we're going to have far less in-person collaboration due to the need to social distance, you know. So students will be provided with, you know, individual learning materials to limit sharing, so it will look different. We're anticipating, you know, some changes as we're, you know, adapting our learning plans, other changes we're just going to have to roll with as we see kind of how this rolls out, both with our remote teams and our hybrid teams.
That's great, thank you so much. Mrs. Amadison, my child is starting out learning remotely. Can I switch if I'm not happy with the way that's going?
Kathy, you're muted.
Is that better?
Yep.
All right, sorry about that. So the big thing this year at Bennett, and as well as the whole district, is safety. We are working really hard to make sure that we minimize as much as possible the interactions that's not necessary. If there's, you know, some kind of an emergency, or we have to accommodate a student, so we will consider that. Otherwise, in general, there will not be, there's no plan for us to bring in remote students until January, where we will consider what's going on right now.
Thank you for that. Mr. Chella, school starts on the 8th, but not everyone goes in that day. Will there be remote learning for hybrid students that day? You're muted.
Yes, I was. Yes, great question. So this is what I kind of addressed earlier. So the first few days are a little bit different. So this, and I'm going to, I'll resend out exactly what the first few days are, but basically, it's, as we said, I sent out last night, A through L will be, whether you're hybrid or remote, will be on Tuesday, the 8th, and then M through Z will be, this is just grade five, so A through L, grade five, on Tuesday only, just to kind of welcome that portion of grade five. On the 9th will be M through Z, grade five. On Thursday, the 10th, will be A through L, grade six, and on Friday will be M through Z, and it will only be whether, if you're a solely remote learner, it will be remote with your, with your teacher, with your cohort teacher, and, or if you're in hybrid, it will be in-person. We're not doing the afternoon remote pieces those first few days, and you're only in one day. It's a very, it's kind of a different start, and I'm going to send out a much, a very clear graph beforehand for parents to follow. Then, starting the next week, the 14th, we'll follow, we'll start the schedule where it's this afternoon remote sessions in there as well.
Okay, so we'll have to pay real close attention to the calendars, thank you. Mr. Chella, how will standardized testing be done, and will those who choose distance learning have assessments done as they have been in the past?
Sure, so S-BAC is unknown, Smarter Balance is unknown at this time, we're waiting to hear from the state with Smarter Balance. District assessments will be administered both for in-person and remote learners, just as they have in the past. So our district assessments will move forward, we're just waiting on word from the state with Smarter Balance on what that will look like.
Thank you. Mrs. Charnas, if teachers are absent, how will lessons be taught in-person and remotely?
So we do have a plan in place for that. We have a plan to have substitute teachers available if classroom teachers are unavailable, either in-person or online.
Thank you, Mrs. Charnas. Mr. Chella, will there be specials, electives, or after-school activities?
So there will be specials. So specials will take place, and the specials' teachers will go to the cohorts, again, to limit points of contact. The only, the only outlier there is PE, so we want kids running around and getting outside and getting their masks off, socially distanced, of course. So PE, anytime a student comes in the building, there will be PE. So that will be every time they come in. Other than that, they will have one special teacher per quarter, per team, and that special teacher will go to them. Right now, after-school programs are not, are not taking place, at least to start the year, we'll kind of monitor things closely, but there'll be no after-school programs and activities to start the year.
Thank you. Mrs. Amadison?
Can I just add that, that does not include MLC. Before and after care will take place, but that is separate from after-school programs for schools.
Right, okay, thank you for that. Mrs. Amadison, how long will there be hybrid and remote learning? I'm only asking because it would be great to be organized and ready for when everyone can go back to school.
So for now, the hybrid plan will be in place until at least October, barring developments that would lead to going to a full remote situation, and that will be reconsidered at that time.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Thompson, students in elementary school were not graded for the last three months of school. A few sentences were written on the report card. How will the kids be graded for the 2021 school year, starting from the first day of school?
Yeah, so I think, thanks, Lauren, this is a really good question, so I don't really have an answer, unfortunately, other than to say that attendance, both attendance and our grading processes are in development at the district level currently. We know that this is really important and really vital information to get out to you, both regarding attendance and grading, so more information about this will be forthcoming, you know, hopefully in the next week or two as we get the school year started.
That's great, thank you so much. Mr. Chella, can you explain what Wednesdays will look like for students? I.e., can I plan field trips, doctor's appointments on Wednesdays, or will students be online learning for specific hours?
Sure, so Wednesday is a learning day, and it will be remote for everyone. There'll be a deep cleaning in the building on Wednesdays, but it will be remote, so students will be on, it will be a little bit of a delayed opening, there'll be a 90-minute delayed opening for a teacher to do some professional development, but there will be remote learning for all students on Wednesday. So unfortunately, no field trips, at least not until the afternoon.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Chella, a lot of parents and guardians have questions about what will happen if a student or teacher tests positive for COVID-19, or if the rate of infection starts to climb in our community.
Yeah, so that's, you know, clearly the question on everyone's mind. So that, we, I left it in to specifically ensure that this is exactly what is going to be talked about next week. So there's, there's a COVID handbook that you'll get before that town hall meeting next week, you'll be able to peruse that to have some of these answers. So they're finalizing it, they're sending it out either tonight, tonight or tomorrow, I believe, so you'll get that, but that's definitely a question that will be addressed on Tuesday night. I purposely left that in here just so we could, I could share and really push the town hall, the health and safety town hall, but that is directly addressed in the COVID manual that you will be receiving, if not today, by the, in the next day or two. I was told it's probably going out today, but it might be tomorrow.
Great, I look forward to seeing that handbook, thank you. Mrs. Charnas, can my child wear a face shield instead of a face, of a mask? That won't be as uncomfortable, and kids could see and hear the teachers better, and vice versa.
Well, students are actually required to wear a face mask. We will be not providing, I'm sorry, we will not be providing face shields, but students could wear one in addition to their face mask, if they brought one from home.
Okay, that's great information, thank you. Mr. Chella, will the school be giving masks to students? How good are they, and can we use our own if we want to?
So yeah, the, the school will be providing masks, and, and again, that's something that is actually going to be addressed on the meeting next week, but I'll touch upon a little bit, so that the, the kind of triple-layer cloth masks is what the, the school, the district's going to be providing every student. So they'll get two masks with, with the school logo, and the hope is that they're washed every night. They, what the head of the nursing for the district shared is they don't want the masks that have the filters, because that can, that can project out, so they want the cloth masks, again, to go back to Ms. Charnas' question, you know, if you want to bring in a face shield in addition to wearing a mask, you certainly can give your child that, but we won't be providing a face shield, but we'll be providing masks. Can they bring in a cloth mask from home? That is fine, as long as, you know, if the other ones are being washed, that's fine, it just makes sure that it's that, you know, cloth, triple-layered, and, but again, this will be spoken in more detail next Tuesday, the 1st at 7:00 p.m. But we will be giving masks, yes, is the answer to the question.
Thank you. Mrs. Amadison, will you be taking the temperatures of kids or teachers each day?
The short answer to that is no. In order to prevent transmission among the school population, parents are hopefully, you know, going to be screening their students before leaving for school. We want to check to ensure temperature is below 100 degrees Fahrenheit, and observe for symptoms associated with COVID-19 outlined by the public health officials. Students must stay home if they are feeling sick, or if they have any symptoms that's, you know, any kind of COVID symptoms at all, or may have had close contact with someone that was diagnosed with COVID-19.
Thanks so much. Mrs. Thompson, will you have sanitizer at the entrance door for everyone to use before they enter the school and in-between classes?
Yes, hand sanitizer all around. So we're going to have it available in every classroom, office, and at every entry and exit point throughout the day. A few parents have asked me on tours if their student could bring their own hand sanitizer, like, in their backpack, and the answer is yes. If you're, if you have a particular brand that you like, I know that I don't like the smell of many of them, so if you prefer your student coming in with like their own little bottle, that's great, but we will have them everywhere around the building for use throughout the day.
Oh, that's great news, thank you so much. Mrs. Amadison, what is the school going to do about teaching and reinforcing the new safety rules?
So it's, it's clear that, you know, a lot of the kids, from what I've seen the past three days of doing the tours at the school, a lot of the students were right on, they had their face mask, they didn't seem to have any issues with it, but we will definitely make sure that we are teaching and reteaching and reminding, and making sure that students know why they keep their masks on, and we will be asking parents to help. I actually, in my tours today, I told students that they were going to be getting into the Bennett family, and then they will have a family within the Bennett family, which is their cohort, so they need to take care of themselves and other people by keeping their masks on and following safety rules, and they all seem to be ready.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Chella, how will suspected illnesses cases be handled?
Yep, so, you know, our nurses will be directly involved, they're, they're being trained regarding, you know, CDC guidelines, state, state guidelines. So again, you know, left this one in, because I think it's important to at least address that there is a protocol in place, it will be going over in detail, you know, at that, at the health and safety meeting, but I spoke to the head of nursing today, I mean, they have protocols in place, and they are looking for the heightened symptoms, so rest assured there is, we're following CDC guidelines. So again, that question I did forward to the, to the, to the Central Office for their meeting next Tuesday, but there, but there will be, there is a process in place.
Okay, thank you so much. Mrs. Charnas, could you please define and explain mask breaks? Is it only outdoors, and what if there's inclement weather?
So mask breaks will be outdoors when possible and for an extended period of time, where indoor mask breaks will be for a shorter, about five minutes, for about a five-minute period, and behind individual tri-fold plexiglass barriers are located on each student's desk.
Ms. Charnas, if you can, just try to talk a little bit more into the microphone, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
Sure.
Much better.
Okay, I can repeat that?
Please.
Okay. So mask breaks will be outdoors when possible, and for an extended period of time, while indoor mask breaks will be for a shorter, about five minutes, for a five-minute period, and behind individual tri-fold plexiglass barriers located on each student's desk.
Okay, thank you so much. Mrs. Thompson, will all schools in the district have plexiglass shields for teachers and hand sanitizers installed on walls prior to school beginning?
Yeah, so we, although we're not giving face shields to kids, we are providing them to staff members around the building to wear in addition to their mask. And then, I, I don't, I got another hand sanitizer question, so yeah, so hand sanitizer, as I said before, it's all around, so there'll be gallon hand sanitizers located in each classroom as well.
Great, can never have too much hand sanitizer. Mrs. Charnas, are student desks separated by plexiglass?
Yes, they are. It's a tri-fold cut-out device. It's a tri-fold cutout divider. Every student work area will have one.
Thanks. Mr. Chella, what air filtration systems are in place? Will there be fresh air circulated from the outside?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And actually, there was a question in the chat on that as well. So yes, so the air filtration system will be adjusted. So we're going to be pulling in air from the outside. Different, you know, they're not going to be recirculating the air. They're going to be pulling in air from outside. And the system's going to be running at max capacity. They've already tested it. So, and it's really important to state that it's going to be running at max capacity, pulling air in from outside, as opposed to the typical filtration where you're filtering the air and recycling it, we're pulling in air from outside. It could hurt the AC a little bit, but the AC is going to be pumped up all the way as well. So if it's a warm day, if it's a warm day, of course, we're pulling in warmer air and that will combine with the AC, so it could bring the temperature down a little bit. But again, safety first, a cool day like this would be a moot point. But we are pulling air in and it's going to, again, max capacity. So it's a great thing.
That sounds fabulous. Mr. Chella, with the flu season coming up, how will you be able to know the difference between the symptoms of the flu and COVID-19? And will any child who shows any symptoms be sent home?
Sure, so again, talked to the head of nursing today and, you know, we talked about, you know, the high-risk symptoms. So the nurses will be monitoring all high-risk symptoms. And they will be making those decisions whether to send, you know, obviously we'll call parents, obviously, either way. But they will be making those decisions on high-risk symptoms. And again, part of what will be shared on Monday and part of that COVID handbook will talk about what those symptoms are and what will equal to a call home, a send home, having to get tested, having to quarantine. It's all laid out in that handbook that I have to go over on the first, Tuesday at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, I really am looking forward to that meeting. Mrs. Thompson, are the schools giving out computers to all students? What do I do if I have a problem like no internet?
Sorry, I think I just turned my camera, okay, it's coming back on. Okay, so yes, the schools are giving out computers, giving computers or Chromebooks out to all students. And so a schedule will be forthcoming from Carrie Kearney at central office. I had spoken, I said earlier that teachers are going to sort of determine need as they're reaching out to families to talk, to welcome new families and returning families to Bennett and just to kind of gauge need as, you know, the year sort of ramps up. So once we sort of understand who needs what, Ms. Kearney from central office will get a schedule out so we can distribute devices as needed. And then hotspots will also be available if families do not have internet, so we can make sure that you have internet access.
That's great, thank you so much. Mrs. Amadison, will the remote, will the remote learning with the lessons be recorded in case parents are not available during the scheduled time to help younger children?
No, unfortunately, we will not be recording, at least at this time. We will not be recording any of the lessons. But teachers may post videos on Google Classroom that would help the students that are home or that will help parents teach the younger kids.
Oh, wonderful, that's fabulous, thank you. Mr. Chella, will remote learning be in sync with the person, I'm sorry. Will remote learning be in sync with in-person learning? And will the same teacher teach both in-person and online classes?
So, good question. So the students that are solely remote will have their cohort teachers. And then the students that are hybrid will have their cohort teachers. So if you're talking about the 100% remote students versus hybrid students, then to say they'd be in the exact same spot, you know, we don't know that because one class may be a little bit ahead, however, they're following the same learning plans. So they're going to be very close to each other. As far as the second part of the question, will the same teacher teach both in-person and online classes? So that, for a hybrid student, remember, the hybrid student has some time and two days they're in, and then two afternoons they're remote, and then Wednesday, everyone's remote. So it will be the same teacher. One student, we assign to one cohort teacher, that does not change. So for a hybrid student, it will be the same teacher that teaches, you know, if they're in A through L, they'll be in on Monday, they'll teach them in person and they'll be the ones logging in in the afternoon with them on Tuesday afternoon. And so there will be the same person. If you are strictly 100% remote student, you will have the same teacher all the time, just like hybrid.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Charnas, will there be a supply list for items for remote learning?
Supplies have been ordered for remote learners. A schedule for distribution will be announced soon.
Oh, that's wonderful news, thank you. Mrs. Thompson, for remote learning, will the teachers be from our local schools or outsourced?
Thanks Lauren, yeah, so all remote teachers across the district are Manchester Public School teachers. So I can tell you that all remote teachers at Bennett are Bennett teachers.
Oh, that's excellent, thank you. Mrs. Amadison, will there be workbooks available rather than only having online programs available?
Yes, there will be workbooks available for math, the envision, our workbooks. They were ordered for all remote students and a schedule for distribution will be announced. So information will be coming.
Okay, I look forward to that, thank you. Mr. Chella, can you describe what the first day of school will be like? What will happen and how do children know where to go?
Sure, so this will also be shared in the letter we send home next week with student placements and student teams. So students will, whether they come in on the bus, they get dropped off. Obviously, you know, unfortunately, we will not be able to have parents coming into the courtyard or coming into the building. We're going to ask that parents drop students off and we'll have adults there to escort students. They'll come into the courtyard and we'll have teachers, as I kind of mentioned earlier, in the courtyard socially distanced with their cohort, with their name, the team and their name. If any student happens to forget their teacher's name or their cohort, we'll have a list, you know, to let students know where they're heading. We'll keep the students socially distanced with their cohort teacher and we will walk them into the building. And, you know, they'll go right to their cohort classroom. So, and then as far as the first day, you know, students certainly, if they have Chromebooks, can bring them and that's absolutely fine. And we'll make sure within the first week or so, as Ms. Thompson shared, we'll be getting Chromebooks out to those that do not have them. And it'll be more of a welcome day, going over procedures, getting kind of accustomed to their cohort teacher, their surroundings, what, where they would go for PE. So just kind of a nice acclamation to the school. Also, it's nice that it will only be no more than around 175 students in, you know, the entire, all five buildings of Bennett at any given time. Because again, we're only having half of grade five on the first day, half of grade five the second day, half of grade six the first day, half of grade six the second day. So, and also, if you are all remote, if your child is all remote, they will be with their cohort remote teacher in, you know, remotely as well. So nothing changes whether your child's remote, whether your child's hybrid. They will follow the same schedule and that schedule will be shared with you.
All right, thank you so much. So Mr. Chella, how will lunch work? Is it prepackaged? Do students get to choose what they will eat? Even though it's free, if you don't like it, can you bring your own?
So a couple things, so we are, from a lens of safety, each team, and again, you'll only have a certain amount of kids from each team because they've broken in half. You know, 30% of the kids will be all remote. Then the other 60% of the kids from that team will be, you know, in on different days, 30%, 30%. So it will be a smaller amount of kids. So they, each team, because it's a smaller amount of kids and to limit points of contact, will have their own entrance in the morning and their own exit in the afternoon. And we've been kind of sharing this with some of the tours that have been going on the past few days. So on the morning, when they come in, they'll grab, if they choose to. And as you know, Manchester qualified, so now all students in Manchester, if they choose, can get free breakfast and free lunch. And they'll be grab-and-go breakfast bags and grab-and-go lunches. So in the morning, they'll come in through their entrance and there'll be an adult there and they'll grab, they're grabbing, they'll know after the first day what their entrance is. They don't need to know it for the first day, that's fine. We'll certainly share that, you know, they'll know by the end of the first day. They'll grab their, if they choose, they'll grab their grab-and-go breakfast. They'll walk right to their cohort, to their classroom, and they'll have their breakfast there. They can take their mask off behind their divider, their three-part shield, you know, divider that's on their desk. They eat breakfast, they put their mask back on. For lunch, when students leave, they won't be eating at Bennett. They'll be, their teacher will walk them out. So that door that was the entrance in the morning, that's just their team's door, will be their exit in the afternoon. There'll be someone there with a box of grab-and-go lunch bags. They'll grab their grab-and-go lunch bag and they'll take that with them and eat it at home. They will not be allowed to eat on the bus if they're walkers, I mean, if they take the bus, if they're walkers, we're asking that they still wait until they get home to eat so we don't have any food on the ground or anything like that. But they will be grab-and-go, so that's the case. So as far as what, if they don't like the food, you know, I'm sure the cafeteria, like they always do, they'll send out a monthly calendar of what the choices are. Due to the fact that we can't have, you know, like a peanut-free tables in the cafeteria, all of Bennett and all of Manchester Public Schools will be peanut-free and that will be shared next week as well at the COVID, the health and safety meeting. So if you do decide to send a student in with lunch, you certainly can do that. Just make sure that things are peanut-free because everyone's kind of mixed in and eating with, you know, these breakfasts with their cohort. As far as lunch, I mean, technically, you really wouldn't, you really wouldn't be sending in a lunch anyway because they're going to eat at home, so that's kind of a moot point. But more for breakfast, like if you wanted to send them in with a breakfast, hopefully they can eat at home if they're not going to take our breakfast. But if you wanted them to eat here, they could do that, just make sure everything is peanut-free. But there's really no reason to send them in with a lunch because they're going to eat at home regardless. And breakfast, you know, hopefully they can eat at home, like I said, and they wouldn't have to bring anything in. So the hope is that we don't have to bring anything in at all because again, they're eating lunch at home.
Okay, great, thank you. Mrs. Amadison, do students in the hybrid plan have to bring their Chromebooks to and from school each day? Is it possible to have one to keep at school and another to keep at home?
So for this year, all students will be assigned a Chromebook. And the hybrid students will need to transport their device to and from school. Yes, I wish we had enough Chromebooks to keep one at home, but we do not. So every child will have just one Chromebook.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Charnas, how does the remote learning portion work with hybrid? Is it the same teacher as the classroom?
Yes, it is, the same teacher as the classroom.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Mrs. Thompson, how many students will be in each class? Is each child going to have their own desk or are they sharing desks?
Just making sure my mic turned on fully. Okay, so there's going to be approximately eight to 10 students in a Bennett classroom on any given day and no more than that. So every child is going to be given their own desk, distanced appropriately from their peer. And then students will not be sharing work areas.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Mr. Chella, if a student is not feeling well enough to attend in-person class, can they participate in remote sessions from home that day and not be marked absent?
Yeah, I found that question to be interesting, it's an interesting idea. However, if they're not in, if they're supposed to be in person that day, but they're not able to come in, the group in the afternoon that goes remote will not be there, it will be the group from the other day, from the day, from the kids that aren't in that day. So they might not be in the exact same spot. So unfortunately, it wouldn't be able to work out because of that. But, you know, because again, they wouldn't be in the same spot. So it wouldn't work out to do that, it's a great question. But they, you know, certainly they'll be able to communicate, you know, with their teacher to kind of get a sense of what they missed and look on their Google Classroom as well, if they're up for it.
Okay, great, thanks. Mrs. Thompson, how many teachers and other students will my child interact with each day?
So we worked really hard to design our schedules. We have as limited points of contact as possible. So if I were to sort of list it out for you, you would think if I'm a hybrid student, I'm coming in, I'm going to have contact with my classroom teacher, who will be teaching all of my core subjects. I will have contact with the seven to nine peers that are in my classroom with me. I may have, I will have contact with the PE teacher because I know that both days that I'm coming into Bennett, I'm going to have Jim. I could, on one of the days, I will definitely have contact with a specials teacher. So if I'm on a team for quarter one that has world language, that world language teacher, on one of the days that I'm coming in is going to come to my classroom to teach me an introduction to Spanish. We also have a team of behavior technicians and security guards who will be assigned throughout the building. And we'll try to keep them, you know, sort of in the same place, so they're working with the same group of kids. So a student may or may not have contact with one of those individuals. I'm somebody, of course, that, you know, in the fifth grade building that may have contacts with your child, not on a day-to-day basis, but I'll be, you know, bopping around. And then depending if your child also is taking a bus. Because, you know, the bus situation is a little bit different because, you know, your child may have contact with kids on the bus that are on different teams or perhaps like if you have a fifth grade child, there'll be sixth graders on the bus. So it really depends. But once they get on campus with us, we're really trying to limit the amount of people that they have contact with.
Yes, it definitely sounds that way, thank you. Mrs. Charnas, will students travel in between classes?
That's a great question and asked by several parents today, yes. I'm sorry, excuse me. So good question. To limit points of contact this year, students will not be switching classes with the exception of being escorted by their classroom teacher to and from their PE class.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chella, what about bathroom breaks and trips to the water fountain? Is there any special, anything special being done to make sure those are supervised and safe?
Yeah, so the water fountains are kind of blocked off for this year. So there'll be water filtration systems that students can bring water bottles in to fill up. So we're going to have each teacher, each cohort, only allow one student out at a time. We will have each hallway monitored by a security guard or a behavior tech. We're also going to limit bathroom use. We're going to, we were told we could have up to two because there is space in the bathroom, but we're going to start off trying to have only one in the bathroom at one time. We'll also have, if there's a line, we'll have stickers on the floor for social distancing, six feet, you know, away from each other in line. So we will have staff in the hallways to make sure protocols are followed in every hallway.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Amadison, what measures are being taken to keep the classroom clean on a daily basis?
So because students are leaving earlier than usual on days that they are in school buildings, we are confident that each afternoon and evening, we can clean and disinfect high-touch areas as recommended by the CDC, including but not limited to the following. The tables, especially tables in the classrooms, doorknobs, light switches, countertops, handles, desks, phones, keyboards, toilets, faucet sinks, touchscreens, copy machines and so on. And there'll be a thorough cleaning on Wednesday, which is the day that none of the students are in the building. So.
Thank you very much.
So I just want to, so that brings us to the conclusion of our questions. I just want a couple of things in the chat. I was responding to a few things during the meeting in the chat. I tried to get some things and then we'll look through to see what we missed. But one thing that came up a couple of times was Chromebooks. Is the expectation that they bring them to and from school, that the answer to that is yes? So again, we've been talking about the tours, we didn't talk about it tonight. But due to, we don't want students congregating together. Lockers will not be used this year, so students should bring a backpack in and they should bring their Chromebook and whatever else they need in their backpack and they'll bring their backpack to their cohort classroom and it'll stay there until the end of the day. But Chromebooks to and from school, that is a yes. Also, the question came about band and chorus and, you know, instrumental. So when students, each quarter, at whatever team your student is on, each quarter, they're going to have a different special. So one quarter, they're going to have music and that's going to be a general music experience for everyone. Everyone's going to get that. And then as far as instrumental, we're setting up a schedule where our instrumental teachers will reach out to students on the days they're not in and set up a time to do a virtual instrumental lesson. So we want, you know, so as of right now, there's no concerts this year, obviously. You know, that's not going to be something that's possible. But we do want students to continue playing and keep their skills up. So there will be virtual instrumental lessons that are, again, on the off day. So for example, you might think like, you know, what is my child going to do? If they're A through L and they're in on Monday and Thursday, what do they do on Tuesday and Friday? Because I know on Wednesday, they're all, they're virtual. But so on Tuesday, they'll be working on some work that they have, you know, assignments that were assigned to them from their time in class on Monday. And they'll also have an instrumental, if they have, you know, if they play an instrument, they'll have instrumental at that time. There could be some intervention at that time, there could be some counseling at that time. So that's going to be the time that's a little more flexible. So that's going to be the time that's a little more flexible. When I say flexible, that we can reach kids that, that aren't, you know, that we didn't want to pull them out of class. But it's going to be scheduled time. So it's going to be a, you know, a hard schedule that they're going to set up with them. But, but those days are a little more flexible for us to fit in some of the things that we can't fit in during the time they're in school. So just lastly, I just want to, again, we will look at the chat to see if there's anything we missed. I think we got most of the, I was responding to some throughout the, throughout the meeting. So if you saw me typing, that's what I was doing. You know, we're just going to do, and I hope you're getting a sense. I mean, we are truly looking through a lens of safety. You know, curriculum is extremely important. And we've worked all summer writing learning plans, you know, for teachers to, you know, to, you know. Adjusted learning plans based on the time they're going to be in, based on the situation, highly important, very important. However, safety trumps all. So we are looking through a lens of safety 100%. I hope you see that in the fact that we're limiting the points of contact for students. We are thinking of ways to just make sure whether in the hall, you know, they're very limited time in the hallway. And it will be very structured and controlled, you know, from picking up breakfast in the morning at their own entryway and, and leaving and picking up their lunch at their own exit way. It's just, it's hugely important to us. So please feel comfortable in knowing that every decision we make is through a lens of safety for your students and for your children. So I, I just, I can't stress that enough. I say that so you feel comfortable and, and, and this in an uncomfortable situation, as comfortable as you can feel in this situation. You know, and we really are partnering with all of you. You know, again, I, we said earlier that we're looking forward to continuing our relationship with our grade six families and building relationships with grade, with grade five. This is uncharted territories for all of us. We're navigating waters that we've never navigated before. So we're going to ask you for help and ask you for your opinion and ask you for what's going to work for your child. So we are truly good. We always try to partner with families, but we are going to partner more than ever this year. So we need your support as well. So please, you know, be very, you know, open to giving us, you know, suggestions, responding to any surveys we send out. Respond to any questions we send out, giving feedback to emails to any of us, you know, ideas that you have. You know, we, we want this to work and we have to work together to, to make it work. And to provide the safest and most comfortable environment for your children. So that is what we're working every, hard every day to do. So please know that. And know that we are here for you. If you want to reach out to us, call us, email us. We're here for you. You know, and we're ready to get going. We're, we're excited to get kids back in the building. And, and even if your child is remote, to, to make contact with them if your child's solely remote. We want to get it going and, you know, we're ready. So we, teachers come in tomorrow, so we're excited about that. Staff comes in tomorrow and then students in a week and a half or so. So any questions we now and then let us know. I will be sending more information out regarding the exact schedule. You know, obviously, next week you'll be getting your kid's schedule, but also just that first day, just more information. Where do you go? If I'm driving, where do I drop off? If I'm, if my child's, you know, taking the bus, what do they do? All that will be covered. So thank you all very much. And we'll look through the chat to see if we missed anything, but I think we got everything, but we'll look through there. So thank you all for joining us and we really appreciate it. Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome. And I will send you a copy of that chat as soon as we, as soon as I close this out.
Perfect. All right. So admin team and Lauren, thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. And we'll go ahead, you can go ahead and log off now and we'll see you guys back here bright and early in the morning.
Thanks, Lauren.
All right. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you, y'all.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
Night.
Night.